I'd like to call you to order if we could, just the informational session that we have scheduled for today. We had had, of course, if you remember back, a lot of cold weather that reverted into some issues with power. I had a couple of calls from the commission about that situation, and so we felt like it would be vital maybe to probably get some folks in here just to talk about that, short overview of that. So I reached out to Mr. Chuck Barber, which was in contact with me that day several times, keeping me informed. And then I did my best to keep you informed by text messages, so you knew where you were with this. But Mr. Chuck with Middle Tennessee Electric is here, so I'd ask him to come forward at this time if he would, along with Chris Templeton from TVA, which is also here to talk about the TVA's interest. And Ms. Virginia Gray will also come forward. So if you'll come forward at this time, and just I'll let you come to the front here and address our commission and anyone else in the audience that came to hear what we had. They'll give a brief overview, then a little bit of time for questions, and that will be it. It does not necessarily schedule to run 45 minutes or 30 minutes, just whatever time is needed. So Mr. Chuck, I'll turn the floor over to you. And I will say this, I think Susan, you had Zaxby's that brought tea and cookies, and you got that. And I think Sarah went to pick it up today, so thank you for that. There is refreshments out there for everyone. Mr. Chuck?
Well, I'd like to say we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I know that Commissioner Bowman would agree with me. That was a rough day for Middle Tennessee Electric, two days actually, the 23rd and 24th. But as the mayor said, our goal was to keep all of our government officials up to speed with what was going on, as fast as we got that information. And it was a quick turnaround time, to say the least. And Chris is gonna talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. But we had all hands on deck, we had linemen out at substations. It was a big deal. What we have learned since then is that we feel like we could do even better of a job of taking care of our members. And fortunately for the Wilson County area especially, during that time, we had a lot of the commercial and industrial customers step up to help us out as well, to keep those residential lights on and to keep families cooking those Christmas dinners and all the good stuff there. So it was an experience. But what I would like to do is to start off with Chris and let him kinda give you a higher altitude overview of how all this came down. And one thing I will say to keep in mind, Middle Tennessee Electric is a distributor. We actually get that power we receive from TVA to you. And with this being a generation-type situation, that's the reason why the mayor and I really wanted TVA to come in and talk about what, how things happened during that timeframe. And then also, I may come back up and tell you a little bit about how we responded. So Chris, you wanna hop up here and...
So first, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here, that this is, you know, this was a significant event, and my goal tonight is to be transparent, to be accountable for what happened, that we never want to see what happened on the 23rd and 24th, that if you talk about bad timing, we recognize it was a terrible time for this to happen. And I just don't want to not express that we understand how significant this is to your citizens and to not take that lightly. This is not something we ever want to happen, or to happen again for that matter. But what I'm gonna do is really step through what happened, how we got to where we got to, what we're doing to respond to it, and take input as well, that we welcome input of, you know, that I can take back to TVA. So this is just here to try to do our best to be transparent. So Winter Storm Elliott, that on the 23rd, December 23rd, about 1:00 to 6:00 a.m. is where Storm Elliott came in, and we're referring to it as a once-in-a-generation storm. And I had to look that up, because I didn't really know what that meant. So what that means is about once every 30 years is where we would expect this type of weather. That what we didn't really, I think, what we weren't able to imagine was the speed and the powerfulness of the storm. That the storm, between 1:00 and 6:00 a.m., the temperature dropped 40 degrees. We experienced winds of 40-mile gusts that we had not experienced that before. And the storm was 2,000 miles wide. So for TVA, we cover a seven-state region. And what we normally would see is that a portion of that, of our system would be impacted. I don't know that we've ever had where the entire system was impacted, where we got no relief from the sub-zero temps, the wind, that the power grid was strained across the nation, that if you see maps, that this storm came in and within a couple of hours, the impact it had to our service area was significant. And so where I'll start with, that's the storm piece of it. That the system piece of it, of when we operate a generation transmission system, that we provide power to Middle Tennessee Electric and the other 152 local power companies that serve across the seven-state region that we cover. So what we had anticipated was about a 31,000-megawatt peak during this period. We underestimated that by 10%, that we were already 10% off of what we thought that it was, the load was 10%, it's 3,000 megawatts. So we're already in the hole there. When this wind and cold came through, what it exposed on our system was Cumberland Fossil Plant is about 2,500 megawatts. It is well-known, those two units did not operate through this, that there is a sensing line on top of the boilers. It's the only coal unit we have that the boilers are actually located outside. So they were, the boilers were completely exposed to the elements, the wind. We even have this sensing line that actually tripped the unit off. The sensing line has heat trace, it's covered in a building, but the wind was so significant, it got through there and this one line froze up, so it gave a false indication to the units. So we immediately lost between 1:00 and 6:00 a.m., one about 1:00 a.m. and about 3:00 a.m., we lost 2,500 megawatts of generation through, at Cumberland. So we're already, we operate our system with a minimum of 10% reserves that we have that in the event something trips off, we've got 10% reserves sitting there waiting to come online. And also that through this, so we started having those impacts, we had other units, so we were fighting that. So now all of a sudden, our reserves are completely gone, that we don't have reserves that we normally have, because we're, this weather has, our units are not operating as we had planned for them to. And the units we had planned to be operating are no longer operating. So we're into our reserves now, that we had planned to import purchased power for this event, that we expected this to be a bad event. So we had made purchases on the market, that's part of, that TVA, we own about 30, own and operate about 32,000 megawatts of generation that we own and generate. We have about 6,000 megawatts of contracted firm load that we, we have firm contracts that we can get that power imported anytime we need it. So total of about 38,000 megawatts. But what we found, the situation we found ourselves in was that this high demand on the system, units not operating as they were, other areas around us were strained, so we were not able to import the power that we had purchased. So we find ourselves in a real, real bad position here, just to be quite frank, that it was something I've not experienced in my 17-year career at TVA. And I started right across the river over in Gallatin Fossil Plant. And so I've been around the operations piece of the business for a good bit and understand it. But what we, where we found ourselves, we have contractual agreements with a lot of our industrial customers that it's almost like a pseudo-generation unit, that we have contracts with them for them to reduce their load. And at that time where, before 9:30 a.m. on December 23rd, we began to call, the call on those contracted customers to drop their load. And that's about the time that probably everybody here is familiar, that you've seen the emergency load curtailment program, that you've seen emails that ask you to voluntarily reduce your load, that we're in step 10, we're in step 20. A lot of times that's on the radio or public, and those are all voluntary, voluntary actions that we ask folks to take during times of high, significantly low temperatures or extremely high temperatures, because the system, that the way a generating system works normally is that we have a load, we bring units on to meet that load. So that's how a normal, in normal conditions, that's how a generating system works, is that you bring on units, you bring in purchased power to beat the load demand. What we've, where we found ourselves on December 23rd at 9:30 a.m. was that we had called all of our contractual load demand. We had brought in all of our purchased power that we were able to get, where other systems around us, that storm being so wide, had impacted everywhere around us. So our ability to get the imported power we had purchased that we could no longer get, because these systems were strained as well. So where we have what's called the emergency load curtailment program, and it's got steps, that when we hit certain, when we go through these events, we go through these voluntary steps, ask for it, it helps the, helps to stabilize the transmission grid and in turn that generation. Well, what we, the situation we found ourselves in was that where we normally have generation meeting load, we had, we had used all of that. So we found ourselves that now we've gotta make the load meet our generation. So that's when we call on interruptible products, people that are contract, the industrial customers that have contracts to lower demand. So we used all of those to get the, get back and try to get the grid stable. So at this point, at 9:30 a.m. on December 23rd, that we entered what we, is step 50 of the emergency load curtailment program. And that program is designed, if we get to this step, that it is no longer, it's not voluntary, it's not optional, that the system is at risk, we need help. And that's, I think, what I want to acknowledge tonight is that our partner, Middle Tennessee Electric, and the other 152 local power companies, that what they did by jumping into action quickly and reducing their load, on the first, on the 23rd, it was by 5%. On the 24th, it was by 10%. And so there's some optionality in there. And at 5%, you can do some things, you can call on some industrial customers. But at 10%, that we've directed Middle Tennessee Electric to execute localized power interruptions, and it's not an option, it is, we need help. And so that's where we found ourselves of where now we've gotta make the load meet the generation, that I want to acknowledge Middle Tennessee Electric's role, that the heroes of this event are Middle Tennessee Electric and their partners around the valley, because what they did by acting quickly, and I know one of the frustrations we've heard from Middle Tennessee Electric, local communities, is how did this happen so quick? Why, what about the communication? And this is all on TVA, that this was a dynamic situation that we found ourselves in, where we, we had, this had to happen. So I want to acknowledge Middle Tennessee Electric, I mean, they're the heroes here of really stabilizing the system, that probably everybody is familiar with what happened in Texas several years ago, where you saw pipes bursting and, you know, just a horrible situation. That while I don't want to minimize what happened on the 23rd and 24th, that the actions that Middle Tennessee Electric took, other local power companies took, avoided that situation here. And so the emergency load curtailment plan worked in that essence, but we also understand that there are a lot of questions and a lot of responsibility we have to come back and perform a full action review. How did we get here? What's happening? Because already I can tell you, these units that I was talking about, that tripped off during the initial storm, we're already, we're taking care of those, that by January 30th, those are all gonna be done, that we're building stronger encasements around the sensing lines on the gas units, that the combined cycle units that we struggled with, that we, we have taken immediate action in our operational, that there's the short term and the long term. So we're working right now through that short term to make sure that we don't lose those units again that tripped off. But also, there's the longer, pardon me, the longer term of the full action review that we're taking now to, you know, that we've got to understand. And when I say a full action review, I'm not talking about just TVA in a silo, working to figure out what went wrong, how can we communicate better? That we're involving our partners around the valley, that it's internal, external, and independent. So we're not just doing this in a silo to come back and say, hey, we fixed all this. That we want other input, that we're taking input back and involving our partners and our stakeholders to make sure we get it right, and that we do a better job to serve our communities. We serve about 9 million people, and, you know, we take that serious, that this TVA is a not-for-profit business, that we, with the economic development, that it is our, our role to make life better. Our mission is to make life better in the valley, and we take that very serious. And we take this event very seriously. So I just, I can't stress enough to you folks that we're not, I'm not here to minimize what happened, but I'm here to be accountable and represent TVA and what we've recognized, communication, the larger issue of short-term, long-term, that we've got some work to do to, you know, repair our reputation and be better than what we were on the 23rd and 24th. And if I'm sitting in your shoes, I have, I have the question of, so on the 23rd, all of this happens that I just walked through, how does it happen again on the 24th? And what happened there, this strain on the system, we had made on-market purchases, that we call them day-before purchases. So the next day where we believe we're gonna import this generation, that with the strain on the system, we don't have the ability to do that now, because everybody else finds theirself in the same position. So we're back to, that's how on the 24th, instead of 5%, we needed 10%. And that's, again, our local power companies were able to reduce that load and recognize the inconvenience of folks on Christmas Eve Day not being able to do what we would normally do on Christmas Eve, and how that impacts the community. But certainly, this is a TVA operational event that this was, that's what it was. It was a TVA operational event that we found ourselves in something, in a position we've never been able to imagine before. So just to give you a little bit of what we saw and that it was the highest 24-hour electricity demand in 24 hours on record for TVA. So about 740 gigawatt-hours, that doesn't mean a lot, but that's a whole lot. That's probably, that's powering a whole lot of homes for about a year, that it was a significant amount. But it's our highest in 90 years of existence, that's our highest electricity demand in 24 hours, that on the 23rd, it was our highest winter peak. And on the 24th, it was our highest weekend peak. And, but that's just to give some, to really help put into perspective that this, this is not something we've ever seen before. And it just, it was a really significant event, that we've, we've got a lot to learn from it. So I'll stop there and do my best to answer any questions. Yes, sir?
In my previous life, I had the opportunity to go on a lot of hydro plants. Do y'all get, I assume get your, part of your power from hydro plants?
About 10% is hydro.
Any of those down for maintenance?
They were, they ran 100%.
Or no units down for maintenance?
Uh-uh. They ran 100%. Hydro, hydro and nuclear performed at 100%. Everything they could give, they gave in hydro and nuclear.
How is the grid gonna survive 50% of the people going to electric cars?
That is...
I mean, I'm serious. I mean, it seems like that that is the goal of the present administration and a lot of Congress. I mean, they, they're moving in that direction.
It's our job to build generation and serve the load. And that's with this, that I understand what you're saying. There's also, there's different elements to that, because normally how the system works, that you have a peak period. So this gets into a pretty deep conversation, but you would hope that your rates would incentivize folks to charge at night where you're bringing units down. But in this scenario, we would certainly have been asking folks, hey, please don't charge your car right now, because the system is strained. But our average peak is about 23,000 megawatts, where this was 33,000 megawatts. So that's, that's how we would, that, the best answer to that is that you would want to incentivize folks to charge off-peak, and that helps the grid as well as meets what you're, what you're talking about.
Is TVA planning on expanding its capacity in the future?
That's this long-term, the, I think that's the longer-term question that it's, it's our job by the TVA Act to serve the load in the valley. We do what is called integrated resource planning, we do long-term planning, and so that's, we plan for growth.
How do you plant, nuclear or coal?
We do studies, because what's been shown, each plant is reviewed individually. And what's been in the news lately, Cumberland Fossil Plant, because what happens with a fossil plant, that you have ash ponds, they get to end-of-life, that these plants that you're operating now, where I came from in Gallatin, the last plant, the last unit came on in 1955, that's a long time for a coal plant. So end-of-life, we evaluate, and at Cumberland, we've just gone through this process, through the Integrated Resource Plan. And at Cumberland, it's, we're gonna put on a, for the first unit that comes off, we'll put on a combined cycle unit, which is a gas plant. They're more environmentally friendly, efficient, and... It's natural gas, yes, sir. So there'd be a natural gas line to that plant. Yes, sir?
You said you'd like to keep it 10% reserve, and you feel like when the Cumberland Fossil Plant went offline, you were not able to maintain that 10% reserve? Do you think the improvements that you're making at Cumberland would keep it from going offline again to maintain that 10%? If you had another, you know, yeah, this might be a generational cold snap, but who's to say in July, we're not gonna get a generational heat wave that's gonna cause the same sort of disruption?
Well, and that's what I would, the last part you just said, Cumberland's not gonna trip off in the summer because the sensing line froze up.
Sure.
So the 10% reserve is, we have peakers that are gas, that those, they're called, they're just gas. It's like a jet engine that you put gas in them, you hit a button, they come on immediately. Cumberland is more of a base load, but we could not foresee that unit tripping off. That was an operational event, that, that we're doing what we can to prevent it not coming off by encasing that sensing line, insulating it, heat trace, all the things that we can physically do to make sure Cumberland doesn't trip off again, because that's when you lose, when you start out of the gate with 2,500 megawatts of your base load generation, we were in the hole. I mean, that's, that's just as transparent as I can be, that that was, we didn't, we did not and could not plan for that, that that was not what we were hoping was gonna happen that night, that early morning.
Do you wanna say something, Virginia?
Well, I was just gonna say too, Chris mentioned the IRP, and that, when they start building that out, we do it every three years. So when we start building that out, that looks and takes into account hundreds, maybe even 1,000, different models and scenarios of what the next 15 to 20 years is gonna look like as far as what we're asking for from the grid. And, you know, one of the things, and, I mean, I won't get into it too far, but that's the exciting piece about TVA with, we've got an early site permit at the Clinch River site down at Oak Ridge, it's in partnership with Oak Ridge, to develop SMR technology, hopefully. And that may be, it's still, it's still, you know, very, in its infancy stages, but that potentially could be an answer for new age, new technology generation. And so, I mean, we're highly engaged in that. And then the gas will be the bridge to fill that intermediate, intermittent load that we need. And, you know, and I think, you know, if we're putting more into our debt, our fossil plants, maybe that could extend the life. I'm not saying that is a promise at all, but, you know, maybe.
How are the windmills and the solar panels affecting your output? Is it significant in Tennessee?
Windmills, no. There's no wind. So we, that's some of our on-market purchase power that we have. And solar, solar impacts summer more than it does winter, because you think about our peak during this, that it was early morning, dark, because on the 24th, 5:00 a.m. is when we started calling, when we implemented step 50. So I can promise you, at 5:00 a.m., solar had zero impact.
Does solar affect you at all as far as percentage of your output, solar? Or is it just individual homes?
I'm not understanding the question.
Solar contributes to the grid, is what he's saying, when it's up and active.
When solar has been used, say at a home or at a business, does it affect your out, your mandatory output to provide the service?
It is not that impact. There's some, I would say that our renewables, with all the purchases and everything, I wanna say is somewhere around 7% of our overall generation. That's, that, I think that's accurate. I don't wanna mislead you, but it, it's a small number. And especially, that number would be smaller on peak unless it was a summer peak. Summer peak is great, you know, it's, it's, while we're that till about 6:00, 7:00 p.m., that solar is very impactful in the summer, so, but in winter, it's very negligible, because our peak is at a different time than when you would see solar. And when it snows and you've got snow on the panels, I can promise you're not generating anything. Thank you. I know you had your hand up.
How did y'all determine the timeframe to shut power to the roof? I know the typical timeframe was around 15 minutes, which is what it was told to most people. My neighborhood was actually out for a little over an hour. So how did y'all make the determination on which neighborhoods were gonna be 15 minutes and which neighborhoods were longer?
The ones that use the most power.
I'm running everything. I can promise you it wasn't electric car.
Well, to answer your question, and I hope I can do a good job with this, but one of the things that we struggle with too, with the weather, is when we, when TVA asks us to curtail the 10% load, we can actually do that remotely. So, because it has to happen very quickly. I mean, we have great linemen, but we have a lot of substations that we deal with. And so that is something that we're fortunate to have, but the weather did impact some of those. And we heard back from, obviously, our crews, but, but some of the members that they were out for longer than 15. That is one thing, and again, we hope this never happens again, but we have to be prepared too, just in case, right? And we wanna make sure that we give the best power possible and communicate that the best way we can. So we're looking at different means of ensuring that when we say it's gonna be 15 minutes, it's gonna be 15 minutes, or very close. minutes, it's going to be fifteen minutes, uh, or very close to that. And it, it's based on where we are with our equipment and those decisions are being, or those things are being looked at through our engineering and operation departments as we speak. Uh, we were in a meeting week before last where all of the employees who were involved in this, supervisors, were brought in to discuss what we had to deal with, and we're hearing directly from you, right? I mean, not only residential, commercial, industrial, the whole gamut. And, uh, that was a concern. The other concern, and this came from the county side more than anybody, is how do we handle emergency management? You know, that's critical. And that is one thing that I think, uh, we saw immediately that we all could do a better, not just Middle Tennessee Electric, but the agencies themselves. So we have actually had a meeting, uh, with our folks at the office to bring those folks in, every county we serve, to talk about how we can do a better job of getting that communication out. And again, it's tough because you're talking about a very short window of time, but to their point, it's much easier for me to make one phone call and have that message delivered in that area versus me trying to call everybody. So that's something that we learned. Uh, communication's key there, but we're shooting for a much better, uh, timeframe if that happens again than fifteen. And we're also looking at other ways we can shed that load. Uh, the first day we were, we were asked to curtail the five percent is, as Chris said, we were calling on CNI customers, commercial industrial customers. And like I said, here in Lebanon, that's where we got a lot of support from that because of the load they have. And some of them were through programs, some of them were just like, hey, what can I do to help y'all? So, you know, that's an important piece, but there may be some other things that we can do too. And that's, that's what we're looking, this is a great time to look at it while it's fresh. And that's one reason why the mayor and I and other city administrators have been in contact to better that, so if it happens, you know it, you know about it, and, uh, hopefully we can count on more of a, if it happens to be the fifteen minute, it's a true fifteen minutes. Uh, and again, that's a, that's an equipment, was an equipment issue there. Fortunately, we had some, uh, good operations guys out there taking care of it and bringing them back on when we saw that.
I spoke with the local manager about shared planning, his own, I know the mayor had too, and he does a good job. But he, he's telling me you had plenty of capacity in the distribution system.
Oh, yeah. Well, let me, yes, let, let's talk about the growth thing. Um, yeah, Middle Tennessee Electric is, is like a pipe. I mean, we're, we're delivering that and that's our business. We deliver that energy to your home, okay? That's why we're a distributor. TVA is a generator, transmission and generation. So we're actually buying that power from them. When you build a house, when we meet with city councils and, and county folks, when we meet with those and we talk to their planning folks, as well as new businesses that want to come into the area through TVA, we're already looking well before they set foot. What do we have in place to serve them? What's it going to take on our end? There's already discussions on, okay, can we serve them from two separate substations in some cases, or it may just be one based on their needs? So we're here to serve. I mean, you want it, we're going to build it, it's that simple. Uh, there's no problem there. But when it comes to a capacity with a very unique situation that we had with TVA, I've been there thirty-three years and that's the first time we've ever done anything like this. And, um, quite honestly, personally, you know, I think we're very fortunate to have TVA as a partner when you look around the United States. And they're very active with economic development. Uh, they're the ones who get us that information, they're right on top of it. So hopefully that answers your question.
I think one of the things that I've heard through the webinars that came out that probably best explained it to me is we, as you ask about electric cars and, you know, they talk about that, they say, you know, well, you know, we are on a normal basis able to handle anything and have planned for tons of growth. Uh, they're actually just put out a newsletter not long ago that talked about where they're going to tackle that. But they said, you know, as they talked to county mayors, they just said, you know, here's the deal, you're talking about something that rarely ever happens on a normal day, uh, you know, that, that we don't have this problem. And so we learned from it, communication-wise, what can we do to make things better there? But he said, just like a tornado, you know, you would love to say, okay, we're going to build the structures better so a tornado don't knock it down the next time, but they said, you know, mayors, there's no way you can do that. But we get better, we do better reinforcement, we build, you know, places inside of schools to take care, and we'll do better on the energy. But there are some things that we, you know, cannot stop and we're not, we're not used to that kind of weather here in our area where other people are prepared for that. So I thought that was a very good, you know, we want to get better, but there are some things with nature that no matter how much we prepare, we're not going to be there.
Boy. Any other questions?
Isn't it true though, that we're facing, this is a national issue, it's not just a local issue, that as we're having to shut down our coal-producing plants for so-called clean air, that the new green deal is not replacing them with, um, plants that produce as much power as the coal, coals was producing? And we are going to be behind and possibly everybody in the country behind. I think you guys do a great job, I'll be honest with you, I have no problem. But I know TVA, I understand, they lost like five producing power plants and was only replaced by two that, and they weren't, they don't perform like the, the old ones. So as we're forced to shut down the, those, our coal burning plants, we're going to have some problems, uh, trying to replace them because technology hadn't gotten there yet. Is that true or?
I'll, your concern is, is not, you're not alone. So what I, my response to that, that we have sustainability goals, but our CEO will clearly tell you that the technology does not exist right now for us to be zero emission. Nuclear, our nuclear fleet positions TVA very well, that about forty, in the future forty-five percent of our fleet, that's base load. But on top of that, with, with the nuclear, because our, our window, what, how, how we plan to get from point A to point B is our gas plants, these combined cycle, that that lowers our emissions, but it still meets the needs of a coal plant because what a coal plant is very unique about doing, and a gas plant can do as well, nuclear plants, when you put them on, they're about ten thousand megawatts TVA-wide. You don't raise and lower load, and that's back to my original, our first piece of this was we were talking about, we put generation on to follow load. Nuclear does this, load does this, so you've got to have something between here and there. And right now, that's gas, that we are looking at renewables, but our, our CEO will be the first to say that a new technology, because when Virginia referenced SMRs, that's a small nuclear, or SMRs, a small modular reactor. So it's smaller nuclear, but it can be raised and lowered. And so that is one of those longer-term actions that we have to evaluate as we go, but reliability, resiliency, sustainability, and affordability are all elements that we take in when we do these studies for TVA, that's what we take into account, that it, it's got to meet all of those. And what Virginia was talking about, our, uh, Integrated Resource Plan, that, you know, I mean, what good is, is a plant, if, if our, if all our rates go up by thirty percent, we're not going to have anybody want to locate. If we have zero emissions, but the power is so expensive, that doesn't, it's got to meet a lot of different criteria for us. So what I'd like to do is reassure you that those four things I just mentioned about resiliency, reliability, sustainability, and affordability, all of those play into our decisions and, and from our CEO all the way down, we take that very serious to meet that commitment to you and, and everybody else of, of how we operate our business. That we've, we've lowered our debt, that our, our, we lowered our debt from about twenty-six billion to twenty-one billion in, in the last three years. So we've, we've significantly lowered debt, but that's to build up for what your question was, if we need to build generation.
More independent.
Yes, sir. And so, so that, that's, that's just a little bit of how we look at generation and when we build it, how we build it, what we build.
We have about fifteen minutes left before we start the next, uh, commission meeting. So what I'd like to do is we'd kind of stop here. If you have any particular questions you still like to ask, they'll be around to talk. And Chris and Ms. Virginia and Mr. Chuck, thank you so much for coming and sharing, very informative and just taking the time out of your day to educate us all. And thank you for what you do, by the way. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.